All right, and welcome everybody to the November Amherst County School Board meeting. Dr. Wells, is there anything you'd like to start with?
No, at this time, sir.
Okay, just checking. All right, so if we could rise for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Board, have you seen the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
So we have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Dr. Wells, we're moving on 2.0.
Public comment.
Brittany, was there anyone who? No one. So no one signed up to speak? Is there anyone from the audience who would like to approach the board? Okay. We're gonna move on. 3.0, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Item 3.0 is policy JHC, second read. Member JHC is the includes the telehealth aspects that were brought forward to you in the past. Again, I would just ask consideration for approval.
Board, any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to recommend the policy be sent to the policy committee, that we have an opportunity to review it a little more thoroughly and possibly research how the language is protecting our student privacy and not making a foothold for some unintended consequences.
Board.
Is that something that you think you can get done before the close because the other member on that committee is?
Yes, I think so. Yeah.
Thompson, you think would that?
Yes, I could make that happen if the administration can.
Can.
You need a motion to that effect, sir, or?
Yes.
Any other? Okay. Sir, can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we send policy JHC to the policy committee for review.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay. Dr. Wells, 4.0.
Consent agenda, sir.
Okay. Board, have you seen the consent agenda?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman, of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Wells?
Item five was our student reps, and due to the closure today, they're not here, so we'll move on.
Move on. Yep.
Then we move into item six. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, have updated on instruction. I'll have to turn it over to Mr. Neighbors.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Wasn't expecting to be up that quick. One through five, right there. Had a couple of updates for the board this evening first, and very sorry to say we are still awaiting summary reports, all the data from the state that we are looking to be verified. Still working through, we did receive information the last couple of weeks that Old Dominion University is the entity that VAOE has identified to be able to assist with that data review. So we do know who is reviewing it. We still have not been provided a timeline on when they might be done reviewing that. We're gonna keep you all posted. Obviously, as we know more information, we will share that. I did press Mr. Jennings at the VAOE, can you at least give me some ballpark timeframe? He just didn't give me anything with that. It was very nice about it, but said no. So still awaiting all the information there. The other update I wanted to give the board, we learned today, Virginia Board of Education approved the recommended implementation plan for the new CUT score, so we alluded to some of these pieces at previous meetings. I want to be able to bring back a more comprehensive and thorough set of information for the board in December. Again, there's still some details lacking with that, we're gonna need to fill in some gaps, but at this point, it does look like they're gonna give us this current school year as a transition year, so no changes would be implemented for assessments that are occurring this current school year. We're very appreciative of that. It also looks as though we're gonna have a three-year time period where they're implementing that approaching category, so they're not going all the way to the new CUT scores. They're gonna kind of give that middle ground to students and still count that as a pass on the assessments. We were very glad to see that as well. That fourth year, obviously, we would have full implementation, those CUT scores would be in place, at least gives us some time to work with teachers, to work with the public to fully understand what that's gonna look like and how it's gonna affect students as we're going forward. We also learned today that there's not gonna be anything that looks back with this, so if you already have those credits, these new CUT scores aren't gonna affect that, that stays on the books, it doesn't harm any students in that way. They're also gonna be consistent in regards to retakes, so if I'm a student at the high school, I fail an assessment this year, take it again over the summer or sometime next year, it would still revert back to old CUT scores. So there are some things in there that I think will help some of our kiddos that are currently testing. So we're glad to see some of those concessions, would have appreciated maybe a little bit more, but again, I'll have a more thorough report for the board in December. Any questions on any of that?
Board, any questions for Mr. Neighbors?
Thanks, sir.
All right, we'll move in right along. We have our monthly data reports for the board this month. Because it's been a little while since we've talked about these, I wanted to put together just a little bit of information, a few slides about where this is coming from. As a reminder, we talked about this back in the spring, and I had consensus of the board to move forward in this particular reporting framework. So there's two different pieces of paper that y'all have in board docs. One is our mastery of standards report, and that's pulling, we're gonna talk through exactly where all that data comes from. We did also continue to provide the laser report as it relates to behavior and attendance, so not the academic component of that. We replaced that with this mastery of standards report y'all have. So where is this coming from? What we have right now are three different platforms that are being used. The real dividing line, though, is between English Language Arts and all of our other content areas. So those new curriculum that's rolled out here over the last couple of years at elementary and secondary, both came with their own assessment platforms, their own data analysis platforms. We are pulling data straight from that to be able to come alongside all the other content areas that are Mastery Connect, to be able to populate the report that we have for you this evening. All of that on those platforms allows us to have those common assessments, so teacher teams working together, pulling from banks of questions, being able to develop their own in certain instances, to have those common assessments among each other. So when they're pulling that data together and looking at it in conjunction with their planning, in conjunction with PLCs, we have that nice data platform to be able to pull from and see where our kiddos are. Regardless of which platform it's coming from, those same decision points are still consistent. We see our little paint buckets there on the right, green, yellow, red, that eighty to hundred percent being well-prepared, fifty to seventy-nine at risk, under fifty percent needing that support. So regardless of which platform the data came from, so we're putting that into the report, we're using those same decision rules across. What we appreciate about this and what's been good for us to be able to see as we're working with teachers and having those conversations, every single question is attached to a standard. So regardless of which platform we're talking about, we can get to that granular level of student performance, we'll kind of show here in just a minute. Not all assessments are created equal, so if we're talking about an assessment that covers a number of different standards, I can go in and see exactly where Josh is on all of these different standards. He might have done super, super well on a couple, not as much on others, and that really dictates where that support might need to be and how we might be able to expand and enrich from there. So with that example, you'll see here, if I have a fourth grader taking a math test with about twenty questions on it linked to three different standards, I, as a teacher, am able to look into that and see exactly where I performed on those different standards, make determinations in conjunction with my teacher team. Where does Josh need that support? How might we be able to tailor that to those individual needs and by student? From there, and how we've gotten to the report that we have in front of you tonight, we're able to roll that data up, so our teachers are able to see that for each of their individual students. That moves into what the administrators are able to see from a school-wide standpoint, identifying some of those trends, some of those areas of need. Again, that rolls up to the division, allowing us to really see where those trends are, how are students responding to instruction, where are we with mastery of those standards at this point in the year? So the report itself and what you have in front of you, we've been able to pull all that down, we wanted to provide that raw percentage, so looking at the number of, or percentage of, rather, standards mastered in each of these different grade levels and each of these different content areas. We're not talking about students in those percentages, we are talking about standards, but the student data is behind that, how they performed on those individual assessments and where they are falling in each of those different standard areas. Just for context, we did want to provide the board some background information, how many assessments are we talking about, where are we in regards to the number of standards we've actually covered at this point of the year versus the total number of standards, and where are we overall with that? All right, so we've talked a little bit about this, we've gone through, but what I appreciate about what we've brought to you all tonight, it's directly connected to what teachers are using when they are planning for intervention, planning for enrichment, planning for instruction. They're really looking at that individual student data, how are students are performing by each of those standards, and ultimately, we're pulling that all together to identify some of those bigger trends and how we might be able to support by each school, by each teacher team, by each teacher, if necessary, with all of that data. Obviously, this is a part of a bigger data matrix. We're still looking at those growth assessments, which will have that data coming up here shortly for the board, our benchmark assessments, obviously, our end-of-course assessments and end-of-year SOLs, all that will be working together to kind of give us that full data picture of where all of our kiddos are. All right. You have the reports in front of you. It's been a board docs. Would certainly be happy to answer any questions y'all might have at this time.
Board, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate the reports. Have you had any conversation with the teachers and specifically, how do they feel where we are? Do they feel like we're moving in a good direction? I know it's anecdotal, but I think our best gauge really is what our teachers are thinking about our kids.
It is.
They're in the trenches, they know better.
Absolutely.
Than what we'll see on a report. So what are our teachers thinking?
Yeah, and I'll speak for some of my colleagues as well, but the meetings that I'm in, week over week, so I've been spending a lot of time at Menelso and spending a lot of time at Amalot Elementary School, getting out and having some of those, again, anecdotal conversations with it. For me, it's about what are they actually utilizing when we're having those conversations around instruction? What are they talking about being useful or not? And I know, I'm very well aware, that I might not always get the full unvarnished truth with that, try to ask those follow-up questions and go through. In general, there's been a lot of appreciation that we do have a platform, it's a little more plug-and-play, there's that ability to pull in and see that data. I think this part in particular has gone very well this school year. Like with anything, there's been some implementation pieces, we've kind of had to tweak, we've had to go back, make sure folks have what they need, administrators, teachers, kind of all the way through. In general, the feedback on this has been very positive. Overall, what I've seen in the trends that I've been able to identify, the conversations that are happening at those PLC meetings, we're much less concerned about process and following steps, much more concerned about, okay, we have this data, what are we doing about that? What does that actually mean for Josh? How are we working with him, getting him a little bit farther on these scales? That's what I'm looking for when I'm in those meetings. We're actually taking all this, doing something with it, is the administrator feeding into those conversations? Are we getting something out of all those people being around the table? That's what I've seen so far.
It's gotta be meaningful, because, you know, teachers have complained on multiple occasions, at least I've heard them talk about how, you know, it's collect data, collect data, collect data, and then they never see any fruits from it.
Right.
So, but I'm actually asking beyond the data.
Yep.
Because, again, I think our teachers are the best gauge we can use for success, because they know our kids.
Absolutely.
They know their struggles, they, you know, they experience it firsthand. Any evidence from our teachers personally as far as, do they feel like we're making progress, progress with our students?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm hearing this year. What's been encouraging for me, especially with some of the content or curriculum that we've rolled out over the last couple of years, seeing fruits from that, so I'm hearing from a lot, especially early-grade teachers right now, we're seeing some of that start to come into play. So our kiddos that did open court last year, as kindergartners or first graders rolling into first grade or second grade, they're already in it, they're seeing a lot of response from that. Behaviorally, things are better, academically, things are better, there's pockets like there always are where there are concerns and we need some additional support. It's been very positive as opposed to last year, when a lot of that was being implemented for the first time. So in general, I would say yes. Anecdotally, that's what I'm hearing from teachers. On the whole, on a good route, moving in the right direction, they're seeing that good progress from kiddos. With some of this data, we're able to see where, we still need to come back and work, we still provide some support, but it's been positive overall as I've been sitting in those meetings and talking to teachers.
Thank you.
Yep.
Board, any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I also want to reiterate, I thank you for the reports and the explanation. Like with all reports and anytime we're dealing with academics, there's always room for improvement.
Absolutely.
Little spots here and there. Trying to look at this report, for me to read it, can you, I know it was done, what, about two and a half months into the school year, so that's about a quarter of our year. So what would be a reasonable expectation or target for the number of standards that were covered and the number of students that you feel would be on target?
Yeah, so the, from the standard standpoint, that can vary quite a bit, as you know, in regards to pacing, where we are. For some content areas, we should be right in that zone, we've covered about a quarter of what we're going to for the year. For some, where the pacing is much more extended and we front-loaded, some of those bigger, heavier standards, we wouldn't quite be as far through as we would expect. In general, looking at the data that we have, and we actually went back and compared that to pacing, we don't have any significant concerns that anyone is way off, or we haven't quite covered as much as we should for this year. The data itself and the other component, talking about how many students we would expect to be in these different areas, or the level of mastery for the standards is probably more appropriate to say with this report. There, again, aren't too many that are outliers here, there are a couple that we've been able to look at and have conversations specifically with administrators. Transparently, some of that has been more of the platform user error component of that, where we weren't quite attaching things the way we needed to, to standards. We had tests that were being given, but because they weren't connected to a certain standard, they weren't populating on the data report that we could see, they were still being used in those PLC discussions, all the rest, we've been able to fix some of those components, but where those things have popped up, we've been able to address that and got an explanation from teachers or even liaisons that are working with those teachers and administrators as to where we are. So on the whole, I feel like it's a good representation of where we are, but also feel like it's about what I would expect at this point in the year from a mastery of standards standpoint.
Well, it sounds like you've got your finger on those outliers and working on that. For me, looking at it, it's a little difficult to say, well, this is the percentage of students that are on target, because that's gonna be moving, because they're gonna add more standards.
Constantly.
So that's a little difficult, so I'm trying to say, do I take half of the ones that are in orange and add it to the green, you know?
Right.
So that's sort of a moving target for me, is try to understand how, where we are, that's good.
Yeah, progress is gonna be the name of the game as we're going forward.
Yes, most definitely.
Have we seen that increase? There is also a component, ELA is certainly one of those, because it is so content-rich with that new HQIM that we have in, there's a lot more that goes into that data, so when you talk about the completeness of the picture of student performance, much more so with ELA than with math. Obviously, we're looking to change that with our new HQIM going forward, so there are some good pieces there. I feel like this is probably a more legitimate view globally than we've been able to have for a long time. It really does pull from a lot of different performance areas when it comes to what the students are doing and showing where they are.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board, any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Justice?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand, I'm looking at our report here.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm looking at third grade, and it says five hundred and twenty-two assessments were administered, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. So with our new HQIM in elementary, there's a lot that goes into that, so that's not the traditional tests and quizzes, it's a lot of activities that goes into it.
Okay. And I'm seeing that only eight percent of our students in one category are where we would expect at this point?
So those aren't students, that's standards. So eight percent of standards have been demonstrated with mastery at this point with those assessments that have been completed.
And when I look down in the math, it's a much higher, much higher group of students, it would seem, in the green, is that correct? Okay. But in the elementary here, is it that the data wasn't attached properly in the computer in the Mastery Connect that it looks so low? I'm just seeing a disparity between the two.
Sure, absolutely.
And I'm trying to wrap my head around it. If the mastery data, we're collecting that data from the open court system, the HMH, and then Mastery Connect is different?
That's right. So our blue band up there, the reading components, so that top graph, all of that would come from open court and HMH, that's where all that data is being pulled from. Math, science, history, all would come from Mastery Connects. So when we're looking at reading, so grade three, specifically that eight percent, what that means is of all the standards that have been assessed so far this year... is of all the standards that have been assessed so far this year, globally, students have demonstrated that level of mastery, that level of preparedness on 8% of those standards. So looking at third grade for those younger kiddos, that's not necessarily tremendously off the mark from what we would expect this year, or this early in the year, I should say. What we want to be able to see is continued progress with that. So I would expect as we're coming back month after month, we're going to see that higher level of mastery when it comes to percentage of standards versus where we are now. See that progress.
So if I'm understanding, I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
No, it's okay, absolutely.
So then this is not saying that 8% of students.
Correct.
Have achieved. It's saying that of that line of students, they've been tested on 8% of SOLs?
They've demonstrated that level of mastery on 8% of the standards that they've covered so far.
Okay.
And I know that this is kind of a bear in regards to analysis and understanding all those pieces, more than happy to schedule time and unpack, there's a lot that goes into it. What, and I know it's kind of a different way to be able to view it, ultimately, it's the best connection we have to what the teachers are using every day. Obviously, they're looking at it kid by kid, being able to inform that instruction, it's really giving us that picture, are we moving in the right direction in regards to our understanding of the content and preparedness for the assessment at the end of the year? But as always, be more than happy to schedule time and go through in great detail.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Based on what you said to her, I'm a little confused, I want to make sure I'm reading it right.
Okay, gotcha.
So for grade three, where it says 8%, that's in green, eight, I was thinking 8% of the students were well-prepared on the 29% of the standards that were tested.
So 8% is the actual standards themselves, the percentage of standards on which students are demonstrating that level of mastery.
Can you say that again slowly?
Sure, absolutely.
Can you say them different words?
Have I said the same thing every time? Thank you, Mr. Childers, I appreciate that. So of all the standards that have been assessed so far this year for grade three, reading, all the activities that have been completed, all the components of open court for that particular group of students that have been completed to this point, of all of that, 8% of the standards that were involved in that. So if I had 10 different standards, well, this is not going to work out very well.
100% yeah, 100%.
This Wheeler should have to give you the bath on it. Ultimately, only 8% of the standards we've covered so far have we seen students demonstrate that level of mastery, where they are well-prepared, if the test was tomorrow, they'd be ready to go. Obviously, that is early in the year, we haven't covered quite as many as we're going to cover throughout the course of the year, a lot of work to be done there, but it's really representing mastery of standards as opposed to where students are globally at this point.
So out of the 29.41% of the standards covered in grade three, 8% of those, the students are well-prepared for?
I'm going to say yes, yes, ma'am. Yep.
And then, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, and a lot, a lot that goes into this, trust me when I say, our team as well has done a lot of digging in and really kind of turned this data inside out. I think it would be good to have some time to really be able to go through it. What helped me in understanding this is kind of seeing the system itself, how it's pulling data, what those actual assessments look like, and being able to get to that and better baseline understanding of it.
But we have a lot of students that at 80%, right, that we've mastered 80% at, or you know, the, at risk categories, so a lot of students are close, or not students, but we're close on some of those standards, but we're not at the high level of achievement for those standards. So the hardest part for this is getting away from students.
Yep.
Like we talked about in the spring, it's not students, it's the standards, but we're at that 80% of the standards, we're between 50 and 79, so that's here, we should be able to, as we go through the year, move those up to, now we're mastering these concepts as I've gone through it more and it worked a little more.
But, but the 80% is not of all of the standards, that's 80% of the 29% of the standards.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. This is not the, now my brain is not working. Yeah, thank you. Growth assessments, again, I'm still having those problems. The growth assessments, we track you for the whole school year, we give that test in the fall, we give it in the winter, we give it in the spring. So that's based on everything, this is not growth assessment data, this is based on everything they're doing in class data.
It's content.
Yes.
Correct.
This is not a growth assessment. So we're not looking at, do you know all the standards for the whole year right now? We're looking, this is what we've taught you, and this is how, as a group, we have reached either down here, in the middle, or at the top, and how we are, how, you know, looking at the percentage of students that had, the percentage of those standards that we have mastered, so to speak, or not mastered.
And do we have this broken down by school? No, yes, do you have this broken down by school?
So it's available for our administrators as part of the platform, we can certainly look at it that way, for sure. Ultimately, though, when we're talking about utilization of the data and what we want to be able to see is when we're going into those PLCs and we're talking about intervention and enrichment, having it by standard really helps us understand the full picture of student performance, because it's entirely possible that on an assessment with three different standards, like we talked about earlier, I could be extremely well-prepared with this one particular or a couple of those standards versus that third or fourth standard that's on there, I need a lot of support with that. So in some respects, I would be in that green, in others, I would be in that red, and that's what we really need to target and be able to support.
But they're being evaluated on standards that they have already been exposed to.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
One last question, when will the fall growth assessment be given?
So we are currently in window and giving assessments as we speak, we'll be closing that out here relatively soon, we're hoping to have that data as soon as possible for the board. I know schools are eager to get that completed and move on with it, so.
Maybe December?
I will cautiously say we will do our best to have that for you in December. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Board, any other, yes, ma'am.
Last question.
Yes, ma'am.
And the data you have here, this is not data you had to get from the state, is that correct?
No, ma'am, this is all internal data.
This is our data.
These are teacher-developed assessments and how their students are performing and what they've put in front of them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board, any other questions? So board, I would recommend if you have questions, you go straight to, you know, Mr. Neighbors there and go, let's see if we can find a time to sit down and go through things and peck through things, and two-on-twos or two-on-whatevers or.
Absolutely.
Dive in a little deeper.
Absolutely, yeah, and if it would help the board, I can send out some time slots, availability, get that scheduled, more than happy to sit down anytime.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Absolutely, yes, sir. All right, we'll move right along, we'll turn it over to Ms. Wheeler and talk about our division literacy plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, you should have a copy of our division literacy plan. This is a requirement that we submit to VDOE through the Virginia Literacy Act, and so for tonight, just for your information, is the most recent version that we will be uploading in that deadline, and really the only adjustment from what we've previously submitted is updating the link where the division literacy plan is housed. As you know, we updated our website over the summer, and so that link was broken, and so that was one piece of feedback, and then just to extend our timeline into the 26, 27 school year as requested by VDOE. But I'll answer any questions you have regarding this plan.
Board, any questions for Ms. Wheeler? Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Wells?
All right, continue right along, we have Mr. Maddox and Mr. Presnel talk about CT.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, as you know, following our Virginia Department of Education federal monitoring, we had, in March, we received the feedback identifying areas for improvement to make sure we're in full compliance with the Call of Duty Perkins Act. The approved correction action plan, you have that in your packet on board docs, it outlines the steps to address the findings that were related to teacher licensure, CTE competencies, completer sequences, industry accreditation, student organization access, any new course approvals, and health and safety standards in some of our CTE labs. So all of the corrective action, all the measures are underway, and you can see the completion dates. Our hopes is we will have the whole correction, corrective action plan completed by September of next year. Some of the things involved, our welding labs and some of those things, so basically, some of those things will be corrected as we get the new renovations in at the high school. We're going to work on this collaboratively, it's between CTE supervisor, coordinator, CTE, human resource, chief academic officer, as well as a maintenance department. So all the items are in process and are on schedule to be completed, and I will answer any questions you may have. I will say, I know it probably looks like a lot, but we have not had the federal monitoring, I said 30 years, but Mr. Presnel, how many years?
Forty-three years, that's only because that's as far back as we can get, correct? We really own that.
So this is the first time we've ever gone through the process of federal monitoring, and when we asked the VDOE people, they said, we just overlooked you, so.
For 43 years.
For 43 years, but really, some of the things, they're all manageable, some of the things have already been corrected as far as teacher licensure, has we done that with course, moving some courses and things around, which we have to do a lot of that when we have a new teacher come in, they have a certain licensure, we may have to move some courses around to make sure that we're in compliance and that teacher is eligible to teach those classes, so. But I will answer any questions you may have regarding that.
Board, any questions for Mr. Maddox?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Maddox, so when you were informed that it was about time for them to come check in on us, so to speak, how much of an advance warning did you know they were coming?
We received the letter, I believe, in September, and then we finalized the date. That's a lot of pre-work that has to go into it as far as gathering documents to send to them.
Yes.
We have, we sent them over 3,000, 2,800 documents, and then they get those documents and then they tell us, so we knew in December that they were coming in March.
All right, now, this, this process, I guess, will allow us to apply for certain grants, right? We need to meet certain criteria to apply for grants?
This is the Carl Perkins Grant that we get every year, it's federal monitoring because it's a federal grant.
Correct.
It's a seven-year cycle that schools go through, and they have another one, the VDOE algorithms that they go through, and they figure out which schools are going to be, sometimes it's a desk audit where you just send them paperwork.
Right.
And sometimes they come on site. So it's a, it's a seven-year process every, every time.
And have we reached out to find out if there's, I know in manufacturing, there's other companies that will do like a pre-audit audit for us, we looked into that option, obviously, we can't do it now, but in the future, if another audit does come up, that we could do that ahead of time, so if we're missing, the rules are changing constantly.
Right, right.
So to stay on top of this is a dedicated staff.
Yes.
You know, I appreciate everything.
Yes.
That you've done so far, it just, sometimes we gotta, we gotta reach outside of what we know and understand, and that'll help us move forward, because this program, I know the board is pretty on board whether we want to be able to continue to move it forward.
Right.
But the money's got to be there, right?
Right.
So the precautions like that, having an auditor come in before the seven years is up, may be something that we need to budget in because those services aren't free and probably not covered under grants.
Well, right, right now, I don't know of any services, I'll definitely look to see if there are folks that do that. What we did do, and I want to thank our supervisor CTE in Rockbridge, and also our supervisor CTE in Campbell County, they came over and did a walkthrough with us, with the teachers, with everything, went through every lab, told us, hey, here are some things that they're going to look at, and some things like that. So we did do that before they visited in March.
Very good, very good, appreciate it.
So it hasn't been 43 years for Campbell and Rockbridge, is what you're saying?
No, there's, I think they happened, Rockbridge was two years ago and Campbell was last year.
Gotcha, right. So Mr. Maddox, is there anything on that list that you look at and go, I'm not sure that we'll be able to get it done, or is it, anything scare you?
No, sir, Mr. Presnel and I sat down and went through, but the dates, and we're pretty confident we can, we can get everything done on this list by September of next year.
And if you look at it, nine of the 20 areas were signage, markings on the floor, enough room to work the, work the equipment, so a lot of it's little things we can adjust really easily as opposed to being major big-ticket items, so I think it's something they should be to get through and we can get done here pretty, rather easily.
We actually had the signage on all the stop buttons and everything that Mr. Pryor and our class actually made the signs, but they just wasn't big enough.
There is ISO standard.
Yep.
So.
Okay, board, yes, sir.
So just looking through, like, you know, the first several one were about, have any proper endorsements?
Right.
So that's one of the ones that scares me the most.
Right.
So have we been working with those staff members this whole time to get their endorsements?
Yes, and basically, I believe everything here is covered because the communication systems and the imaging technology, we had to switch classes, so we don't offer those classes anymore because the current instructor is business and information systems, so we had to find classes in the business and information systems pathway that would correlate and be similar to what we were doing with the tech ed licensure, so, and sometimes that's, that's what we have to do.
Talk to me about the, the ones where we were missing the completers. So didn't provide programs required for completer sequences of courses?
Okay, so that was like entrepreneurship and cybersecurity fundamentals, and entrepreneurship used to sequence with every business class, and then they switched it around and changed it at VDOE, so now you have to have advanced, you have to have the advanced marketing, strategic marketing, you have to have advanced entrepreneurship, so they're constantly switching and changing some things around, and we have to figure out and, and get the things in. And most of this, you'll see in the program of studies, we've already put it in the program of studies for next year, and that's the evidence we will send to VDOE.
So we've already started to make those corrections so that we can have those, okay.
Yeah.
Because those are, those are, that's low-hanging fruit, in my opinion.
Right.
Right, those are ones that you shouldn't, you know, if you're paying attention to it and you see it, when they change it.
Right.
Those are easy ones to, to check off the list.
And you got to remember, we're, like, we're doing the program of studies now for next year, so once that gets approved, if something changes this year, we're all the way around to the following year, so it just, it's a time, time thing there, but, yeah.
Board, any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Maddox, can you talk to me about the one that's labeled new courses? Have we, are we supposed to be applying for that? I know that the board was talking about doing some expansion if possible, and there are some things that you have expanded, but it was imaging technology introduction, teachers to tomorrow, evidence of labs meeting market needs.
Okay, so the new course applications, we have taught teachers for tomorrow since, since it was first come out, we have to do a new application for every new course, they said they did not have our application for the teachers for tomorrow, so I'm having to do the new application and send that in for those courses.
Okay, so we've got the course, you're just going back and making sure you have the application.
Filling in the application, yes, ma'am.
What about the imaging technology? Is that the same situation for that one?
The imaging technology is something that we have, we're not teaching that anymore, that's what I was talking about, where we're moving into the design multimedia webpages, so we changed that course, so imaging tech is not even going to be offered.
But we have it this year?
No, we do not.
So.
We, we changed that course for this year.
I'll touch base with you later about that, because I just see it here and I want to make sure that that's not a course we're supposed to have, but I'll touch base with you later.
Okay. Okay.
Board, any other question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. Last thing I have was, like, I saw several of them where it talked about, which one was it? Basically, the, the equipment was improper, not that they, like, there's something here about equipment not secured.
Right.
The rule of thumb on that is if it's got bolt holes, they need to be in it.
Right.
Right? I know that gets a lot of people on those audits. But there was something here about equipment in need of repair, removal, rear of laboratory, improperly stored equipment.
That was actually in our cybersecurity lab, where we had a corner set over there where we had some equipment that he uses in cybersecurity, because he does some networking stuff, too.
Yeah, this was actually, the one I was reading from was culinary arts. I do see the other one for the cybersecurity labs as monitors electrical component surplus. Yeah.
Okay. The equipment needed for removal and repair, it's actually the wash station that's in our culinary arts. It's, it's not working, and we had somebody come look at it. It cannot be fixed, so we're going to have to remove that and replace it.
Yeah, I just bring it up because I just want to make sure we're staying on top of it. You know, it's, our assets are the, you know, we don't have a lot of money to buy new stuff, and so we want to maintain what we have, so.
Yeah, I've actually already got chef to give me a quote on the, on the new wash machine. So, but we're kind of waiting because they're going to do some renovations to that as well in the spring.
Board, yes, ma'am.
Question. I see a lot of notation that says adequate evidence wasn't provided. Does that mean we were meeting the standard, but we just didn't have documentation? So there's like ten of them?
Yeah, that's just them saying that it wasn't anything in our documentation or anything to provide. So the evidence that we have to provide them now, it could be lesson plans, it could be pictures of the labs where we've made the corrections, lack of evidence for that, that's what that means. So that's why you see that so much.
So is that something we normally need to have ready?
Just for the competencies, lesson plans, things like that, that should be a regular thing that we have all the time. But some of the other things where, let's say we didn't have signage, or we didn't have evidence of this, or we didn't have evidence of proper signage for the SDS sheets or things like that, that's where we'll have to give them evidence, pictures, maybe it's a procedure or something for them when they go through it. And we submit, now that this is approved, we'll start submitting that evidence, and then they'll say, yes, this is good, or no, we need to send something else, so.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Board, yes, ma'am.
Oh, just a quickie. And I've read this a couple of times. At first, I was pretty concerned, still am, but I've heard explanations. But here's my thing, because I deal with this a different way, JCO, we call them the POPO. So did you know they were coming?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But did, did we have a self-study? What I mean by that is a preparation for them?
Yeah, we do.
Were these guidelines in this? I would call it a, what I have in my office is a guideline of what I know they're going to look for. And so I make sure that I've, I've taken the refrigerator out. So what I'm saying is, do we have a guideline to go by?
I, I have not seen a document put out from VDOE that, that lists the guidelines for each and every lab. A lot of times, it's going through the process, knowing what they're looking for and things like that. So, you know, the signage and stuff like that, we thought we were good with the signs and things like that. And we thought the markings on the floor, because you could see them, but they thought they needed to be a little brighter and signs a little bigger and things like that, so.
So it could be a twofold situation that whoever came should, well, we should have had better guidelines knowing what they're going to be looking for and had that together. That's just a comment. And then in the future, we'll be able to check these off quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, of course, we, more so than the signs and all that, is the health and safety. You know, that's, if I were them, that's probably what I would really be a knuckle on. You know, it's like, you know, stuff improperly stored. I saw, I saw something here about chemicals and all these sort of things. So I'm not trying to pick you apart, I'm just saying that if we know they're coming, which I kind of know, I'm up for accreditation in the spring, so I'm doing my homework now because I don't have time to do corrective action. I will if I have to. Somebody will find something some of the time.
Right.
But even though you said this is not a lot, it was a lot for me.
Right.
But thank you for everything you've explained thus far. But just maybe have some type of, and I imagine you do, some type of notebook, some, not a notebook, a manual with all these sort of things. And each instructor, I'm going to take it back to instructors in your, in the instructors' labs, the cosmetology, the welding, they too have to be accountable for a checkoff. And students don't know. We'd let them be in charge, be a mess. But each day, we're looking at these, these type of hazards, chemicals in, we just got to, where's that at? Chemicals in the athletic training room, sports medicine.
That was a bottle of biofreeze that was left on the counter and not in the locked compartment.
Yeah. Well, to us, that's not big, but see, the POPO loves this kind of thing, you know. But I'm just, I'm just giving some help that we got to have a manual or something, some kind of checkoff sheet to go by so that we won't have this issue again.
Now that we've gone through the process, you know what they're looking for.
We got the check sheet.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it really helps to go through the process. Like I said, we did have, have some folks from neighboring counties, but every team that shows up at the school could be a different team. So some teams maybe look at some things, some teams look because they went outside, looked outside of our labs and things like that. And I know at the other areas, they never went outside, they never looked anything outside the shops. So it just depends on your team that you get from VDOE. We take it as a learning experience. We're glad we went through it. It wasn't a pain, yes. But it is good to get this feedback from them and make sure that we get everything up to date and what we need in our labs.
Yes, ma'am.
One more thing. Mr. Maddox, I just want to say how much I appreciate you bringing this to us and that you're considering it a learning experience. I know that we are making a concerted effort between the administration, the board, your, your purview to expand our program, to make sure that we're meeting industry standards, making sure that we're expanding, we're working for quality program. So this just helps us build more of our awareness of things that we need to do. And this afternoon before meeting, and I'm sure you probably will talk with the board about the GO Tech, but I appreciate you bringing that and letting us look at it because, you know, we were talking about expanding into our middle school, preparing our students. And, you know, if that's what the board selects or y'all recommend moving forward, I will say that I think that opportunity is just what we need to prepare our students. And this audit will also help us to, to bring top-notch standards into our high school and whatever CTE programs we have. So it's right along the lines with what some of our goals have been. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Maddox, I've been through a lot of audits like this, and the first time you get one is, you know, a lot of times, there's a few bumps in the road. If this had been the second or third time you've been through it and you had a list like that, it'd be different. But it's, it is what it is. If it's going to take them 43 more years to get back, it'll be different by then anyway. So, all right. Anything else, sir?
All right. Well, I just want to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Maddox, Mr. Presnel for their work on that audit. Having just gone through a federal audit myself, there's a lot of judgment calls from folks come in. We appreciate that learning opportunity and getting perspective on it, but very glad that we were able to move forward without too much pain and expenditure on that. So thank you all very much for your work. Our last item this evening for instruction, I'm going to have Ms. Cecil come up and speak to the board about updates on our program of studies.
All the way down here. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We are pleased to present the 2627 Program of Studies. As you know, this document serves to support students and families in planning academic pathways that are in alignment with graduation requirements, post-secondary opportunities, and their individual goals. Each year, committee reviews this program of studies to ensure it is clear, accurate, and aligned with the VDOE, as Mr. Maddox was saying, their requirements and our current instructional practices. The revisions for this year were developed through staff feedback and then subsequent committee review with attention to course sequencing, accuracy of program information, and of course, ease of use for students and families. The updates focus on refining some course information descriptions and expanding opportunities across a couple of content areas, CTE, fine arts and world languages that you'll see outlined in the memo that you have at your place. A few courses were removed, again, in accordance with video guidance, and we've updated some course descriptions across dual enrollment programs, math remediation courses, just to make sure that we are being clear in our language about grading, credit values, and placement there. So also, in addition, this year, we are presenting a middle school program of studies that has been created to align course information and academic planning across grade six through 12. And hopefully, this will support a smoother transition, more informed decisions about course selections, and some stronger academic and career planning guidance. So the academic, the updated program of studies is going to be published prior to that course selection season. That's happening very quickly, and so that students have a clear, accurate information to support that planning. I will be happy, that's all I have, and I will be happy to try to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Board, any questions, Ms. Cecil? Yes, sir.
Does the middle school program of studies include any of the new courses that they were talking about adding for CTE?
So, no, it does not at this time. I believe that that process, I don't want to speak too much into it, I don't want Mr. Maddox to do so, but I think there is a process to take that to you later on during budget season.
Yeah, during budget season, I'll have to do, if approval is there and we do end up getting those courses, then I would do new applications and send that into VDOE, and then we could add it to the program of studies for next year.
Board, any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to just say thank you. It, it looks great, and having the middle school one, too, is just really nice in the way you gave ideas for the parents, what they can look for and think about, instead of just the data and the facts. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, and I cannot take all the credit. I had a fabulous, fabulous committee and a pressessor, school counseling supervisor before me, that laid it out and made it very easy to reveal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it for instruction this evening.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Wells?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hoden, Ms. Ray.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before Mr. Oakes gets started with the construction update, lots of good things, of course. As you know, we did serve hot meals. Several of us were there the first day. Mr. Oakes was there in the morning for breakfast, and then we made it over for lunch. So there were many smiling faces for that, so that's great. And as Mr. Oakes highlights some things, I'd like to say, one of the rooms that really struck me the last few days is that nursing lab. I can't wait till you see it. You know, obviously, it's great to see the cafeteria, but that nursing lab is just a fantastic space. And also, we were not happy with the fieldhouse. The turf install didn't go well. They had to come back and put in one section. They completed that, and also, all the welds and the nets are now done. So we just have one small thing with the fire alarm in there. We should have the CO very shortly on that, just in time for those folks to get in there and use that. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Oakes, and I'll take it back in a few minutes.
All righty. The picture on the left here, you see, is the kitchen a month ago, which is in somewhat disarray in stone construction versus the picture on the right, which was taken earlier this week, which is a full functioning kitchen right now. All the oven's up and running. We still got, you see that gap in the middle between the two convection ovens and the steamer there. We still got two more ovens that are coming in. Give us six ovens total to do all the cooking and stuff in. But the ladies are getting by with what they have right now. Also, the food court signed up. We got to do a modification of that. We were not happy with, with the way that verbiage came out and the way it was laid out, so they are correcting that here very shortly as well. But as we enter into the serving lines, again, the picture on the left was a month ago, and the picture on the right, as Dr. Hoden mentioned, is a fully functioning serving line. It has come a long way. You know, we, we've had to have some serious heart-to-heart conversations with contractors and subcontractors to get us to this point, and I do commend Jamerson Lewis for stepping up the game in the last couple of weeks to get us to this point. And again, as you see, this is some of the food that they were serving this week, nacho bars and those type of things, and then fruits and vegetables and these, the serving equipment we have is multifunctional. It can do dry heat, wet heat, it can freeze, it can chill. Multiple function, there's 23 bays, I believe it is, in all the serving wells around the, around the kitchen or in the serving lines. So it gives them a wide, diverse, different things they can do in different lines and stuff. Again, we have these chiller boxes on both sides. We have warming and/or, you see the picture on the right, there's flat surface that can warm and/or chill as well. And again, a lot of diversity about what they can do. So the first couple of days, of course, the ladies in the kitchen have done a fabulous job. Again, I want to commend them for the past several months, the amount of effort and work that went into fixing sandwiches at other school, having their staff in the high school separate it out to the other north-end schools, packing all the sandwiches up, putting them in coolers, dragging them back to the high school, unpack them and serving students. Those ladies have done an amazing job to get to this point where we are today. So kudos to the Amherst County High School cafeteria staff and Ms. Klein's group. As we move on to the classrooms and offices area, which is in the old auditorium, if you will. Picture on the left is a month ago, and this is the same classroom here just earlier this week. As you see, the tile floors in, wall's been painted. The ceilings are pretty much ready to go. I don't know if they've had the above ceiling inspection yet. In the far back of the picture, you see the cabinet work is also in. So we're in the final staging of this. I would estimate probably by the Christmas break, these rooms should be finished if everything goes okay. The picture on the left is looking down the hallway from the entrance of the old auditorium. So right now, it's a plywood, plywood door there. Looking down the hallway, there's the classroom I just showed you is on the left. You see the two doors at the end of the hallway on right, there are two classrooms that are in front of the auditorium, the glass section. Those two classrooms do have windows in them, and then the hallway would turn left and go back to the hall that goes down towards CTE. These are the two offices that are in that area as well. When you go to turn the corner to the left, these offices are on your right-hand side. This is one of the classrooms on the front of the building, again, in the old auditorium. As you see, the windows on the left, cabinets in the back, so it's, again, it's on the, the finishing touches need to be put on, and we'll be good to go. Going on to the nursing lab, as Dr. Hoden mentioned, this is a pretty impressive area compared to what they are in now. Picture on the left was a month ago. All of a sudden, the construction building, the wall, which you see right in front of you now, which is finished and also has cabinets, simple as. The window frames are in, the glass is not in yet, but we're looking out from the lab area into the classroom and to the right there, where you see that tall cabinet on the right, that's the entrance way that goes back out to the CTE hall. So this is, you're basically standing on the old stage right now, just to get you acclimated to where you are in the school. This picture right here is actually the classroom part of the nursing lab. The other section was the lab itself, where the students would be practicing all the nursing and CNA skills that they need to do. This is the classroom itself, again, cabinets in here. The good benefit of this, the teacher and/or students can see what's going on in the lab as well as, you know, be conducting activities in the classroom all at one time. There'd be a washing dryer outside the lab as well, you know, so they can, you know, use that to clean the things they need in there. Going on to the cosmetology, a little bit behind where the nursing lab is, we've done some, and talking to the high school staff and to Mr. Maddox and Mr. Presnel and the cosmetology teacher and stuff, we sort of did a couple of things in here. But the picture on the left is a month ago. All the demo work is done and pretty much wide open. First, what's happening on the right. The right right now, I'm standing, basically, where you come into the lab from the CTE hallway, looking out into the parking lot, the big white area you see, that's the window. This is the old band room, so looking toward the front of the school, out toward the parking lot. You can see the framing has been done, the piping, electrical work has been done, for the cosmetology stations, all the different chairs and pedicures and, and all those wonderful things. As you can tell, I would be the first one in line to get a haircut, and we'll be good to go. Again, the left picture, looking across the cosmetology lab, the center section there, again, is where a lot of the chairs would go along this wall here, in the forefront of the fixture, in the picture. of the fixture, in the picture. The picture on the right is actually where the classroom is going to be, so you see the blue, four blue, where the cat six cables are on the floor there, and if you look on past in the back part of the picture, that white wall, that will actually be the entrance off the CTE hallway. They welded the, there's still a little up above the wall there, they welded that in place today, so that the demo, that wall can take place now, and the entrance way into the cosmetology lab will take place. So again, we're in the cosmetology classroom as we speak, the lab is actually behind this picture in the foreground. Agriculture lab, that is also progressing. A month ago, you see the picture on the left, and the picture on the right, a lot of HVAC, mechanical plumbing and stuff is in place, the floor, still working on the floor drains and a couple of areas there, but a lot of HVAC, electrical equipment's in place, the new electrical panel has been mounted, and we had some good discussions yesterday about buying some time, if you will, rerouting some electrical stuff that the electrician came up with, to make this area a little bit better than it was designed as. Again, looking across the agriculture lab, it's coming along, this will be in the, I'm guessing, probably February, March range, somewhere like that, if not before then, that will be complete. So anyway, over the next few weeks or so, complete the classrooms in the auditorium area, go ahead and complete the construction, cosmetology lab, that'll be after the Christmas break, and as will be the agriculture lab. Any questions?
Board, any questions? Looks nice, it's coming along.
And if you'd like to go up and take a look, just let us know, and we'll be glad to meet you and do that, and if you want to see some smiling faces, come during lunch and watch the children eat some hot lunch.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Next, on my agenda, just wanted to update you on the school safety grant, so I did mention just a little bit to you last time, kind of in passing, that we also received the Open Gate metal detectors. We are sending out the release to let parents know tomorrow about this. Next week, we'll be trained, and then we expect to have them up and running in full operation December 1st, after the Thanksgiving break, so we're excited for that and to get that going. So again, we're putting that information out to parents tomorrow to let them know, and then we'll work on training the students and our staff for that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Questions?
Next?
Any other questions?
Okay. Next, you have 702, you have the student suspension report for October.
Board, any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hoden.
All right, 703, if you'll notice, you have the best lab update for October. You'll notice Dr. Smith put in there uses by date, by the day of the week, and then by school, and then also the time of day. The lunchtime seemed to be the most predominant time there, and then the last is just a little bit more student information by grade level. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to go over that.
Board, any questions for Dr. Hoden? Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Hoden, how many students, I appreciate the usage number, but how many students are being served?
Total, it's, yeah, it's at the top right there.
969.
Yeah, 969 students.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions for Dr. Hoden?
All right, and lastly, he asked for a little bit update on the positive pathways program. It's a program we have at Amherst L, and just an update, we started the year with five students in there. Currently, we have four, and as you know, we try to transition those students back to the classroom, and then for, when we have room in there, we meet as a team and on a bit team, and try to determine, you know, best case, best practices for that student. We involve special ed if, you know, if we need to do that as well. So again, typically, you know, this is our K2 program, again, four students in the program now, there were five, one transitioned, we had to transition that student out, and then we have another that is also currently working through a transition back to school of the four.
Board, any questions, Dr. Hoden?
What's the max number of students that program can handle? It's a depends question. We try to do six, but it kind of depends on the students that are in there and the staff, what they can handle. We've got a few in there right now that are a little more on the difficult side, so trying to keep that number down a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarity, so 969, is that the number of students or the number of times the lab was accessed during October?
The number of times it was accessed.
Okay, so we don't have the actual number of students that are participating.
Oh, no, sorry, the lab was accessed 1,985 times in October.
Now, that was the beginning of school.
Beginning of school, yeah.
So I'm thinking the 969 is how many times it was accessed by students in October, so maybe we could have the number of students.
I can get to the exact number of how many students.
That'd be great, thank you.
And if it could be broken down by grade, that would be awesome.
If you look at the last slide.
Yeah, there's percentages there.
Student distribution by grade level.
There's percentages and such.
Right.
Percentage, you want numbers.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Board, any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Hoden.
That's it for me.
All right. Okay, Dr. Wells?
Ms. Connet, financial.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before you tonight are your October financial reports, so we're four months into the fiscal year, two months into receiving our sales tax revenue, and that is looking strong. Our ADM is still higher than our budget, showing at 3,650 currently versus the budget being built on 3,615. The big change on these reports is this month's report does reflect the payroll and benefits that they are encumbered, so all those contracts, everything has been pulled out, and it's reflected on your expenditure report and that object code report. So this gives you a better picture of what we, what is committed and what is truly available to spend. Going forward, we'll just continue to keep monitoring our revenues, our ADMs, and those items, the sales tax, utilities, but right at this moment, we really have, you know, nothing, no concerns to report at this time. Do you have any questions on any of the reports?
Board, any questions for Ms. Connet?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the one-page school operational revenue, and I'm looking at the top line where it has the negative 112, that's in the, that mean, that means that's what's coming, but we haven't received it, or help me interpret that, sorry.
No, ma'am. So the, when the state gives the cap tool for the state revenue, they list the sales tax as one figure, so you'll look at the second line on that report, and the budget for sales tax is the 5.9 million. When they actually disperse it, it comes in in two different categories, and we have to report it separately, so it's really those two, the top two make up your sales tax revenue. Because there was no budget and we've received it, it's showing on the revenue reports, if it's negative, you've exceeded what you.
That's what I wondered, okay.
It sort of looks backwards.
That's a positive, yes. That's extra money.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Board, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Connet.
Okay, so I have a second item tonight, and that is the school activity audit reports for the year ending June 30th, 2025. We have posted the auditor's financial reports and their management letter. We've also, at your place, is a high-level presentation from the division, just summarizing. From the outward appearance, you could conclude that we may have taken a step back from where we were last year. Last year, we were celebrating the five schools that received that perfect audit, and if you look at it now, it's two. I don't really feel that's the case. Under the guidance of the accounting coordinator, Mrs. Minetti Davis, who's in here tonight, the bookkeeper shifted to a completely new software system, School Fund Online, so they were still trying to do their duties while, you know, we're transferring everything over. Some of the things we realized is that with that old system, it sort of gave the ability to mask some noncompliance with some of the financial procedures with SFO, that's not an option. It's a real-time system, and you can't backdate anything. So we look at it as a step forward. We're growing, it's a better program, we have increased visibility, increased oversight, and we're going to have that increased compliance that's going to follow. I do want to recognize the two schools that did get the perfect audit, and Amalon Elementary, this is their third year of a perfect audit, and Elon Elementary, it's their second year of a perfect audit, and that is just amazing. At the same time, I would like to recognize the efforts of Mrs. Davis and all of the bookkeepers. We are so fortunate to have these bookkeepers, they are so dedicated, they already had their plates full when we decided to load it up, and they took on that challenge and learned that new system. So we are very proud of where we are, but we know that we still have some room to grow.
Board, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So if I understand you correctly, Ms. Connet, there's greater transparency, it's kind of like going in for a typing, we used to do those typing tests, and when you're used to typing and backspacing, when you make a mistake, when you do that test, you can't do it anymore, so it looks like you have more errors, is that kind of similar?
So with the old, and it might be what you're saying, I apologize, but with the old system, they were able to put in the date that needed to be there, and I'm not saying that people did that, but you could backdate, you could backdate the POs, you could backdate the receipts, the deposits, that's, it's a real-time system that stamps when you do everything, so.
So it's greater transparency.
It is.
Which is really good.
It is, and, you know, everyone's adjusting, and we all have the ability to see what's in the system now. In the past, you had barely one person at the school that held all that information, and, you know, we can go in at any point and see, we can't do anything to that data, but we can, we can actually see where everything is at any moment, the principal can do so as well, they do not have to look and ask for a report. It is a good thing. It's, I call it just the year of transition, and just remember, this is phase one, there is a phase two, so, you know, they're still, you know, learning new things, but we, it is for the better.
Thank you very much for all the hard work you're doing to accomplish this.
Board, any other questions?
Just a statement, Ms. Terry.
Yes, sir.
And it's possible to do it successfully, right, because we've got two schools that were able to complete, complete it, get all the paperwork, all the numbers matched, everything was good, so it's not a system that's impossible to use, so.
That's correct.
It was more of a teachers or whoever, staff members, if you were doing a fundraiser, and say you forgot to turn your money in at the end of the day at 3:30, 4 o'clock, and you turn it the next day, in the past, you could have gone back and maybe changed that date, but now, how things are laid out, you can't, what's received it today, if it's not received today, then it shows as a negative, so things like that are what I think is catching some people, and first off guard, now they know how that has to work, so you should see it improve.
Yeah, some of the workarounds, they were so used to, and now it's changed, but overall, it's going to be better for everyone.
Yes, sir.
Immediate accountability, like it.
Board, anything else? Thank you, Ms. Connet.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, human resources.
All right. Mr. Chair, members of the board, my first item is, in fact, that, it is this month's vacancy memo that you can see. Only a couple of notes, we have hired the English teacher, that was a teacher that had left to go on to higher ed, but we've already filled that vacancy. The elementary teacher who left for promotion in a private sector, we are hoping to hire a December grad, we've been reaching out to universities, looking for current student teachers, so we're very hopeful that we can get that filled here in December. Those are the things worthy of note, but any questions you have, happy to take that.
Board, any questions for Mr. Gallagher?
Ms. Terry?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Gallagher, bus drivers, have we've got anybody, like, waiting to take the test?
We have people in training, in the training course.
How many do we have in the course right now?
Do you know how many there is?
Two, I believe, not enough.
Yeah.
Not enough, right, but we do have.
And two of the ones that were in training, I think we're looking to do that from a sub perspective to others, so, so only two that are in process as potential full-time hires.
So anybody looking to get a CDL, needs to contact us?
Absolutely, 100%.
We can get that, we can make that happen.
We provide the training, we provide all that.
Free.
Free!
As long as they work for us.
As long as it's contract, right, there's a little contract stipulation in there, but.
Ms. Thompson said she was going to do that.
Hi.
Cedar Park Road.
That's all I have, Ms. Terry.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, Ms. Gallagher.
The next item is just, I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up, I think you all know we pushed out our 2026, 2027 calendar survey, I think you all received that as well. We put out a few reminders to make sure we gave everybody an opportunity to participate. We utilized the framework from our current calendar and then asked some questions about what individuals might like to see, if they'd like to see changes in next year's calendar. We had actually 263 respondents, of those, 60%, 61% of those were teachers, and 11.4% were IAs, so teachers and IAs the largest group of respondents, which, that's pretty typical of that. And from that, overwhelmingly, staff felt like they would like to continue with the overall current framework of our calendar. We got great feedback in a lot of other areas about some small tweaks we might want to make to help make sure that we're meeting everybody's needs within the course of the school year. The fall break, remaining two days, at least for 10- and 11-month employees, one day for 12-month, was highly recommended we keep that, rather than pulling some of that back to reduce to end of the year, for example. 70% preferred that we have a three-day Thanksgiving rather than a whole five-day Thanksgiving, adding days to the end of the year, so that was kind of overwhelming. And the current structure of our PD and teacher work days, the framework was overwhelmingly appreciated, though they did have some suggestions on how to maybe streamline the use of those days. So I thought the survey was very productive, gave us good information, so we're analyzing that, and our hope is that we're going to have a proposed draft for your first read and review in December. I'll take any questions you might have.
Board, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gallagher, you said the current framework that you have was overwhelmingly supported, what percentage did you have that supported the current general framework?
I have the percentages, so, I apologize, I'll get this for you real quick. Where are my percentages? So, for example, when I talk about the current framework, we start talking about the beginning, the end of the year, some of the breaks, when we had individuals talking about whether they wanted to keep that fall break, for example, one of the primary questions, that was 67.3% responded favorably regarding the Thanksgiving break and how that structured, and 70.7 responded affirmatively there, so that was pretty overwhelming. As far as the number, not the number, the timing of professional development in workdays, 75.5, 75.7 indicated to keep that similar structure going into next year, so I thought those are very, very, it wasn't like 59 to, you know, 41, they're pretty, pretty high responses, percentages.
Something that came to my attention last year as we went through this process, I think the teachers appreciated having the survey and the options, and they gave feedback, and I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I think that once that feedback came, the calendars were sent to us as a board and never sent back to teachers, so I had a few that contacted me that said, you know, we made suggestions, we made our recommendations, but we never saw the final and were allowed to vote on. recommendations, but we never saw the final and were allowed to vote on that. And I could be wrong on that. But my recommendation would be, or I guess my ask would be, once you come up with those final ones.
It would just be one.
Just one?
Right.
Based on, so you're not giving them options this year?
There's no data to support the need for options.
Calendar A or calendar B.
That does happen sometimes. There have been discrepancies, I think you all have asked, based on the responses being so close. I think there were like 59, 50.9. There were very close responses, and I think the suggestion was to create a second calendar option. There's no evidence here to indicate there's a different calendar to create based on the responses.
So when you bring this recommended calendar to us, will the teachers have had an opportunity to see that and give you the percentage of teachers that would support it?
Well, so I can certainly have a calendar to push out. Whether or not they were supported or not, I don't understand that question because there's nothing to vote on. It would be yes or no, but if it's no, you have no other option. Does that make sense? If there's one calendar, to give it for review.
If you did not have the majority of your teachers supporting the calendar that you were promoting to us, then that, to me, would be problematic, and you would want to.
Well, I guess what we could just push it out and ask for additional feedback with the final draft.
When you sent the survey, was it after the calendar attached?
We did create a draft of this year's, but it was based very similarly on the current calendar. We put one out there based on this current calendar for next year. They look very similar. We did push a draft out there, so that's what the survey was based upon. I think you had access to that. And then the questions were structured in a way to determine if there are certain structures they liked, and if not, what would they like to see. And there was not overwhelming support to see major changes from that draft.
Because if I remember right, last year, there was a calendar that was more extended and a calendar that was more condensed. And you received some feedback that suggested that they would like to have more days to where the calendar would be extended. And the teachers that had voted for the shorter one felt like they never did get to have any input on the longer one. Does that make sense?
To a degree. I know what you're talking about. We did push out the two options, and because it was close, I think the first time we pushed it back out, even with a compromised calendar. And then we got more feedback on that. And ultimately, there were options, and not everybody, I mean, the majority voted for the one that we ended up approving, but there was also some administrative decisions that had to be happening there as well. Non-negotiables, and we can't change the number of school days in the year, for example, and some things that Dr. Wells wasn't willing to eliminate from the calendar ultimately.
Yes, and I understand that, but that helps me remember what one of the issues seemed to be. When that happened, that there were some non-negotiables, I think the teachers that I had spoke to would have appreciated knowing what they were and what that was going to look like. Prior to it being sent out as this is the adopted calendar.
Yeah, I recall that.
It's transparency, it's communication.
It is, and then that communication went after the fact last year when it was explained. So you're correct.
So that's what I'm trying to make sure that on the front end, that we are communicating, that the teachers are seeing it, they know what it's going to be before we, as a board.
Well, when we proposed that next month as a first read and pushed it out to everyone for their review, it is still under consideration. Therefore, as others have an opportunity to review it at that point in time, as do you all, if there's something you would like to see differently at that point, we'd be open for recommendations if we wanted to push back and look at something different.
But I think what she's asking, Jim, would be that we have the proposed calendar now based off the feedback we've gotten. So we probably need to share that feedback with staff, knowing this is the percentages of votes were per question, and who said, and how many said this or that, and then give them a draft of the proposed calendar prior to the board meeting. So I think what we need to do is after Thanksgiving break is have that compiled, and we'll give them a copy of the survey results as well as the calendar, and then they'll give them a chance to review that, let the board know if they have any questions. So when you do your first read, you'll have feedback.
We can probably do that by early next week, because we have all that compiled and ready to push out.
Yeah, thank you. I think that would be helpful for the staff, at least, to know and see.
Absolutely.
You know, accomplish the same thing, but make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board?
Mr. Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. How many respondents did we have?
That was the 263.
263. And what percentage of those respondents were central office or administration, and what percentage were teachers?
So teachers, what I had indicated with teachers, we had 60.8% of those. Instructional assistants, 11.4. The next highest group were administrative assistants and secretaries at 5.3. And then just other, a wide range of others mixed together was 22.4.
Good. Thank you very much for reviewing that for me.
Board, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you.
Dr. Wells?
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Matters. First, I want to just, first, I wanted to just comment on the threat situation that caused us not to have school today and just give some feedback there for the public. I want to thank our families and our students, our community members, who brought forward this information to us last night, because if we don't get that, we can't make decisions. So I just want to say, anytime you have something like that that you feel is questionable or you think it could be seen as a threat, please notify us, please notify the sheriff's office. Let us do our investigations so we can make the decision off of that. Some things on social media, we might not know if you don't tell us. So please make sure you let us know these things, if you have concerns, so we can act accordingly. So I just want to thank our community for that. I want to thank the sheriff's office for their work on this situation, and they got it right on top of us, and as we called, and they did, I really appreciate the time and effort they put into it as well. Sorry we had to close today, but given the situation, I think that was where we had to be, and hopefully it won't happen again moving forward. All right. Legislators' visit, that'll be Monday. And as Dr. Hoden and Mr. Roach stated, showing some of the facilities, we will be taking, we will tour some of those facilities on Monday as part of the legislators' visit. So we'll show off some of the areas that are still under construction as well, and take y'all into those areas on Monday. That starts at 10:00 at the high school. We will meet, and we'll send an email to you, just a reminder. We will meet, we'll come into front of the school near the main office area, we'll meet there. Then we'll go down to the new teachers lounge, and we'll have our introductions there, and then go from there on the tour. Come back, kind of a working lunch, so to speak. We'll have lunch provided by our CTE department, Culinary Arts, and then we'll have the talking points basically while we're eating, so we can kind of do a working lunch, so to speak. We're not going to the field house, but if anybody wants to go out to the field house after the meeting, then we'd be glad to. I just, from the time it takes to get there and get back, we would eat up probably half of our time. We have a lot of just walking out there and back, so just want to let y'all know that. But we are looking forward to that on Monday. I know many of you can be there, so appreciate that. And if you can, you know, so we'll meet in the front, and then we'll go down to the classroom and start our conversations. Veterans Day, Veterans Day was Tuesday. We had events at all of our schools. I was able to make it out to the breakfast at Central, and I was able to go to the program at Amherst Middle. Both were very well-done. And then other schools had other programs going on, and it was important for us to, as I told one of the media stations, our students need to understand what the importance of Veterans Day is. And I think this is a great way for us to do that by having these programs and assemblies. I had a couple ideas for next year. I talked to Dr. Crawford about the high school, but feel really good about what we are able to do to represent, to recognize our veterans and make sure our students are aware of the sacrifices they've made. Any questions there?
Board, any questions?
Okay. All right. American Education Week is next week, and we'll have items for our teachers for their. School Psychology Week was the 3rd through the 7th. We missed that one as far as up front, but that was then. We'll appreciate all the work they do for our students and our schools. We had our last staff appreciation tailgate for the year. I know Mr. Roach is happy that that's behind us, but it was a good turnout, it was a great night, great weather, and appreciate everybody who was able to come out to that, and we look forward to doing that again next year. Next week is the VSBA conference, and so Mr. Childress, I need to just, we need to just talk about transportation, what we need to do, and same with Ms. Saunders, so we make sure we're straight. Ms. Legan, I know you're riding with me, but just make sure we get all that straight before we, tonight, before we go down, if we could. But we'll be there, and it'll be a good few days there in Williamsburg, and appreciate the time that y'all can put in to go into that. We have our Lunch and Learn series, part number two of that tomorrow, and that is from 11:30 to 1:00 at Quality Archery Design. And if you don't know where that is, that's the address, it's 301 East Progress Road in Madison Heights. If you'd like to go to that, it's great to go out and go there to those meetings and have our students and stuff there. Mr. Max, you want to add anything to that?
Yes, this is part of our Lunch and Learn series, where we actually take students that are maybe interested in those career pathways to the businesses, and we provide lunch, they get a tour of the business, but then our Culinary Arts provides lunch for everybody and his students, and the business owners can interact and stuff in kind of a non-formal way and have conversations during lunch. It's, we went to Hickey last month, and we're going to QAD, and we're trying to go to businesses each month through April.
And so, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
What day will we be going to QAD?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, what time?
11:30 to 1:00.
11:30 to 1:00.
All right, great.
What's the address?
301 East Progress Road, according to Google.
The dead end.
We added the cul-de-sac, there's nowhere else to go.
That's progress.
Look for the big elk.
And for those who don't know, you know, it's great to have them in our community. They, actually, the releases that were used in the Olympics for the archers in the Olympics, they did a lot of that, redesigned those for the Olympic team. So they do a lot, a lot of archery and professional archery folks there in that line. A lot of hunters use their products, but it's great to have them in our community, and we're looking forward to tomorrow. Cybercon, we went to that, was it three weeks ago now? Four weeks ago? Something like that?
Three.
Yeah. So I say that because Mr. Childress and Joe, for us, were able to, they were a big part of making that happen, and I just want to appreciate that. Didn't think we'd be using some of the stuff quite as soon as we got to use it, but it was good to be there and to participate in that, so I appreciate them doing that. Last thing I have tonight is to thank Mr. Maddox for the GoTech bus being here. I was able to get up there tonight and take a look at some things. So a lot of things we could incorporate into our program on that bus, so I think that was good for us to see that, and thank them for coming, and Craig for putting it together so they could get here for us. So, you know, we'll have more on that as we go through the year, I think, but if you have thoughts from after touring the bus, you want to have some questions for Craig or Shannon, just let us know, we'll be glad to try to answer them. But I do appreciate the work they did getting that here so we could visualize it, you can read what's on the bus, but until you see it, it actually makes a little bit of difference. And I think it also stands to what we have on our own CTE bus, because a lot of the stuff there are things that we're doing, it's just maybe the next step up as far as cost and everything else. But it was great to have them here tonight, and I appreciate the work they did getting in there. Then any questions, that's all I have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Wells. So now, Board, we're going to move on to, we'll do 11 and 12 together.
One thing, I do want to say, students, 100.
I can answer this for you, Ms. Justice.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
119, 109 students, 25 in Manellison, 15 in Amherst, 24 in Madison Heights, 20 at DUC, and 25 at Central. And we can get this to you and more.
The graph's already updated, so we can get that to you, but I just wanted you to know tonight since I got you.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so Board, we're going to go ahead and do 11 and 12 together, committee reports, and anything from our school board members. So Ms. Saunders, let's kick it off.
All right. Well, I wanted to congratulate Coach Wilson and the Lady Lanzers volleyball team. That was, I think, their best season in 20 years. So if you guys got to go out and see it, it was really exciting, and it was really heartfelt, and congratulations to them. I also want to congratulate and thank you to the CTE team for putting together a great career fair. Thank you, dynamic duo back there, I appreciate it. Businesses always enjoy coming to Amherst, and they look forward to it, so thank you. And I hope you guys did get to go see the GoTech bus. It was impressive. I didn't get to well because Ms. Wheeler was hogging it, but, you know, next time. She had a one-on-one lesson.
She can make more money.
There's been, I know we've had some negative news in the last couple of weeks. I want to thank you, Dr. Wells, and your staff, Dr. Hoden, for keeping us up to date, keeping us posted, and as always, putting our kids first. So thank you for that. So that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Rossi?
Yeah, looks like we're going to head for a record night on the meeting time, so I want to try to keep it short and sweet here, keep us moving right along. Yeah, it's been challenging since our last meeting, and, you know, when the post came out yesterday, and it was shared with the rest of the board, I was taken back and learning more after seeing it online, seeing that people were sharing it and knew about it long before we did was very concerning. And I want anybody that's out there listening to know that, I know there's a stigma around saying something, but we're talking about the safety of our children, safety of our staff, and it's important that, you know, even though it may seem wrong to say something over something that might just be nothing, but let us make that call. Pick up the phone, send the emails, send the text message, get it out there, because God forbid something should happen and other people knew about it and we didn't. We need those people to come forward, and, you know, the events over this month, I'm glad the people that did come forward. It's brave, it's heroic in a way, because it allows us to do what we need to do, and that's keep our students safe, keep our faculty safe, keeping our community safe. And I think that says a lot to those people that did come forward. And don't hesitate to do it, because if it is nothing, then it is nothing, and that's fine. But that's a call that our administrators, our sheriff's office, needs to make. Don't think that it's nothing, because sometimes nothing can be a lot. And those little cracks that things get through, we got to be aware of that. So if you see something, say something. It's very, very important, especially with the challenges that go on in today's world. Now, the CTE stuff, that is incredible. I know the audits, they are painful, and you're never going to get everything, because if, as an auditor, you're not doing your job, you don't find something, right? So you were there for the picking, I'm sorry, but that it caught you like it did. But now that you're through them, and I know a lot of those rules are rules based on what you say you're doing, you have to make sure you're doing it, just like any ISO audit. It's not their rule, it's your rule, and they're going to make sure you follow your rule, because if you can't follow your own rules, you're not going to follow somebody else's. So if you say that the sign has to be X by X, then it better be X by X. You know, if that line's supposed to be two inches wide or four inches wide, it better be there. And if it's supposed to be two feet away from an electrical box, it's got to be there. I know, been through it, hate it, but we did have people that would come in and do pre-audit, and that might be something that the students would get involved in, because you know how students like to come after the teachers, right? So, hey, here's your audit, go do your audit, let us know what you find. And that might be a learning experience, because there is a career choice in that option, too. Auditors are very well-paid, and they're needed. So thank you for doing that and getting all that buttoned up for us, because that's really going to set Amherst apart, and I'm looking forward to it. Absolutely. That bus was refreshing. The next step, the next step, and I think we're going to make that happen. Like I said before, the board is very excited about this, and we want to make it happen. Passionate people like yourself and your team, nothing's going to stop us, so let's move it forward, and we'll see if we can't get something for the archery team tomorrow. I'll work on that. I know a couple people, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Justice?
Thank you, sir. So I'm the board member representing Amherst. So, I'm the board member representing Amherst at the Central Virginia Gov. School. And we've had a lot of exciting things going on. First of all, I just want to say congratulations to Ms. Audrey Collins, Amherst student, she received the Founder Scholarship for $10,000. That's huge, very impressive. We have a new director. Dr. Steve Smith is retiring and we have been fortunate after interviewing and going through the process that we offered the job to Dr. Scott Douglas. We're very fortunate, our Central Virginia Gov. School received 25 commendations at our last evaluation by the Gov. School Evaluation Team. One of the benefits, many benefits to Dr. Scott Douglas, but one is he serves on that evaluation team that goes around to the Gov. Schools in the Commonwealth. And one of his expertises is budget. So, he's an innovator, he has a great heart for expanding introduction to Gov. School at the middle school level and is pushing in to schools to make that experience known while those kids are just starting to catch a vision for what their future can hold. So, that's very exciting. For myself, I got to be in the dunk tank at the Amherst Festival and it was a nice day. It really wasn't a bad day to be in the dunk tank. I underestimated, the hardest part would be getting back up on that seat every time and not falling in. It was wonderful to see our new high school expansion, to see our community. And I was just super blessed that, as I listened to Dr. Wells on Veterans Day and many areas in this nation does not have a supportive attitude towards our military. And we are blessed in our region and in our district, we do. We really support our veterans, we understand the significant role they play in protecting our, our constitutional republic. And I'm just so thankful and privileged to be a part of this school system. I wanted to just say thank you, Mr. Gallagher and Dr. Wells. As far as the survey, you, that's a high response and I'm really excited to see people responding to those surveys so that we can have statistically viable responses. I want to congratulate Amherst and Elon for a perfect audit, three years for Amherst and two years for Elon. That is tremendously impressive, especially in a new system that is maybe less forgiving, because it's so, it's like getting a picture taken without having the makeup done. So, let's see. I just wanted to speak to the need for bus drivers. Both my parents were bus drivers and I have spoken to many of our bus drivers who, this is in a way, a second career or a ministry. These are people that were, some of them were in corporate, some of them had their own business. And they are coming back to drive our kids because they believe in our community and they know the difference they can make. So, I want to speak to people who are out there maybe wondering, how can I make a difference in this world? And maybe being discouraged that bus driving is an incredible opportunity to, on a part-time basis, speak into the lives of kids, to show them what high expectations are, to show them that there is someone that cares about them. So, I would just encourage you to apply and come and be a part of the Amherst team. And lastly, I leave tonight for a school board member professional development in Richmond for the weekend and I look forward to coming back with information that can benefit our school district. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. I serve on the STEM Academy Board and we had a meeting this week in which we updated our annual goals. Students are well into their programs for the year, a few handful of students, you know, need to work on time management, so I was glad to hear that they really were trying to individualize some of that training on time management for our students, that they said they really were seeing the kids just turn around and start to grow in that area. Multiple internships going on. Tomorrow, they're having mock interviews and I get to participate in that tomorrow at 8 o'clock in the morning. But that's an exciting time, the students are really nervous, but once they get through it, they see how, how to be at ease with that and I think it's an important process. I would also like to thank Mr. Maddox and Mr. Presnell for their work during the audit. I know that was difficult in coming up with the C T E five-year plan for bringing the Go Tech. I was under the impression that when I went out there that we were going to have this, you know, if we choose that, that it would be a big bus that our kids would get on. And my first question to Mr. Maddox is, well, what do we do with our old one? Well, I learned that it wasn't a bus, it was actually a program that you bring and put into the classroom with the equipment and it has created a lined curriculum already. So, I just want to say thank you, because I think that is one of our objectives that we are looking at together and that's our pathway of programs. So, thank you both very much for that, that was very exciting, seems like a good opportunity. And then I also want to say congratulations to Amherst and Elon for their, their audit. Ms. Conich, I'd like to say thank you for your oversight, bringing in that new program that's transparent. I know that that's probably something that's ongoing, that was an extra added responsibility, but I look forward to seeing the improvements there and Ms. Davis and all the bookkeepers, because I know it's a endless task to take care of all of those details. Also, would like to thank Mr. Neighbors for keeping your eye on the instruction of our students, which is ultimately why we're here and that's a big task, so thank you and your team for that. And then I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving. One of the things that I'm extremely thankful for is for all of you, for the work you do, for the parents, the students. But today, I'm very thankful for the safety of our students after the threat that we had and I want to say how much I'm thankful for you, Dr. Wells, and for your team and how you and the first, the sheriff's department handled that, as well as our community. I don't want to reiterate the words that you said, but I do want to express my gratitude for the safety of our students today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, well, some of the same things, we always want to thank the staff for all the hard work they're doing and the great renovations at the high school, that just keeps on making me excited. And Mr. Maddox, I won't mess with you, but I know what the popo would do, so been there, done that. So, we, thank you for all that hard work y'all are putting in. I did, did not get to the Veteran Day events here at the high, at the school this year because of work things, but we did have one at the college, so I still feel that I was inactive, very active. One of my students is a Marine, so we were able to be at that event. So, as Ms. Thompson or someone said, we take that very seriously and thank you all right there, the veterans, for all that you did for us on those occasions. I'm going to try to get to the legislators' visit. I also want to say, yes, the Apple Festival is very good this year, great participation from our students and I just had a wonderful time just seeing everything that we have there. And I think along the lines of what everybody's already said, it's old saying, but if you see something, say something. And I'm always, I didn't pay a lot of attention to that back in the day, but now I do, in the last few years, just any old thing that might come your way, you kind of got to be listening for school safety, it's all of our school safety. And as Ms. Thompson said, thank you, Dr. Wells and union staff for being proactive last night. I kind of missed it for a minute because my, I was laying down, my phone kept, I said, uh-oh, something's wrong. And so then people began to call and unfortunately, they were calling, asking me something I didn't know yet. I'm like, oh, that's what's on my phone. But then we got, got calls about things. So, people were concerned, but it's good just to say at the end of all of it, we all still here and very safe. For Head Start, I was in a big work session there yesterday and sometime we don't really pay attention, I won't say that, sometime we don't know what the government shutdown really did affect some things in, in the school systems. Maybe not in Amherst directly, but in Head Start and Linkac, which feed into our school systems, there was a moment of panic there. I think it's over now, maybe. But, so, we were meeting yesterday just to make sure that we can continue to take care of all the little people that's in Head Start and all the families that we serve in Linkac. So, even though the pressure's been released, the pot is cooking better, you never know when to be back on. So, we just want to be mindful that when we speak to our legislators, that would not be my hot topic, but it will be just a little throw-in there of the nerve-wracking situations that put our school systems in. So, I'm glad it's over for now. And with that said, Pastor Lee would like me to announce, and that's my church pastor, that because of some of the food shortages, and there are some real, even though with this lifted, our church is going to have Thanksgiving open for anyone that wants to come and get a free meal. I say free, because sometimes people say, well, do I, don't bring anything except yourself. He wants entire community to feel that if you need something that day, please come on down. I don't cook, right? So, I'm just going to throw something, I'm going to throw a few sodas in the tank and go on down there. But we will be there and from 12 to 4:00. And Dr. Wells gave me permission to put a flyer in the schools, I don't ever do anything until I ask him, so that parents who are not trying to cook a big Thanksgiving dinner, for whatever reason, and not just kids and people who are needing, but sometime, like myself, I'm going to get emotional, if you live alone, you might not want to eat alone, right? I got kids, but I'm just saying. So, it's for everyone, just want to throw that out to those who are listening, you're very much welcome to come 12 to 4:00 on Thanksgiving Day. And we can watch football at the same time, you know, we can just do all that. But anyway, all is well and as Ms. Thompson said, I too wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving if I don't see you in person. It is a time to be thankful for last night, number one, and for other things. No one has, I talked to Dr. Holden real quick on the phone this week, and I pay close attention to behavior and discipline. And I can't tell you, not maybe in Amherst, but things are getting a little out of control, our children are going through something. And maybe they went through it a long time ago and I didn't know it, but they're going through something now and so the teachers and the aides and the bus drivers and the nutrition, everybody is doing all they can for that six hours. But I'm asking the parents, as I leave this conversation, to please help us, help your children to be better at school and not be disrupted, because education is very important.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Childress.
So, I'll keep my comments brief, thank you. So, the Apple Office Festival, I did go to that and that was phenomenal. I did really enjoy getting to see all the students that were actually participating in it. The only regret that I have is I did not get to dunk you. It would have been fun. I did, on election day, I got to attend the Professional Development Day that we had, that you had at the high school. And I just wanted to say, I attended two sessions, both ended up being on A I and one was taught by Dr. Wells. And I just think both of them were phenomenal. The content they covered was, was really good, the staff were engaged and I think everybody walked out of those P Ds a little better prepared than they were before. So, great job to you guys. I think it was, and the, hearing the teachers talk in the hallways about the different sessions that they went to was all very positive, so that was great.
Thank you.
And I did have the pleasure of helping to host the first annual Virginia CyberCon in the state, a cybersecurity conference specifically for K-12, tech directors and superintendents, which Dr. Wells did get, attend. And I was very pleased at the attendance that we did have with superintendents and senior leadership. And one of the things that we got to do was to, we did a tabletop exercise so that they could kind of experience a real-world cyber event and then work through that. And I think that was very eye-opening for a lot of people who'd never actually been involved in something like that. So, Joe was one of the ones who helped with it as well and John Collins from Lynchburg City. So, very well attended, we had 60, 65 different school divisions represented across the state out of 130 school divisions, so. And then all the feedback has been extremely positive, so that's great. Again, just reiterate what the rest of the board members said, great work, you know, keeping our, our students safe. I know when the message came out, it's not an easy decision to close, close school, but I think we always err on the side of caution. Our, you know, we can wait another day and save lives, it's worth it, so. Great job, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, one of the themes I've heard here tonight is, is see something, you know, say something. It's, it's the world we're living in, talk about A I, that some of the threats that we have out there on a computer system, talk about the, the threat that we got last night, the metal detectors we're going to have available. Unfortunately, it's the world we're living in, we got to be proactive and go out there. I did speak to a parent today and she told me that her son had gotten the text about 8:30 and I looked on my phone, that's about the time you were sending it out to us. So, it's, he actually went to his mom and said, look what I got. And they called the police and said, you know, police thought we're already aware, but we're just reiterating that to our parents and our students, when something stupid like this starts going around, let somebody know. You just never know when it's going to be the real thing and we hope that it never is. And thanks for all the reports that you guys give us, you always give us plenty of information to chew on. But speaking to Veterans Day, thank you to all of our veterans. I am not a veteran, but I did get the privilege, not on Veterans Day, I had a one-on-one trip with a Vietnam vet to Washington, D.C. for the weekend, a couple of months, a couple of weeks ago. And you want to change your perspective on everything, you take that trip. It was, it was very eye-opening, so I encourage everybody to get to know a vet, they have a lot to offer. So, with that, I'll close and we will move on.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, members of the board.
We got public comment.
Public comment, I'm sorry.
That's right. One more chance. Anyone from the audience? Yes, sir, if you'd like to approach the board, state your name and your voting district or address.
I am Leo Almond, I live on Shady Oak Drive, I run for Mr. Rassie.
Okay.
So, want to say, my daughter is a 12th grader at Amherst High School and I'm very proud of her, her name's Olivia Almond. She was in, or is in, how do we put that?
Thank you. She was in Mr. McCafferty's class and is one of the students that has made sure that she said something when she needed to say something. I would like to take a moment to say thank you very much as a father. I got some information at 8 o'clock at night, I was able to call my representative immediately and he immediately called who he needed to call and we were able to get this thing rolling very quickly. As a father, you can imagine how I am feeling about the situation and of course, it's not, everything is not public knowledge, I recognize that, but I'm assuming that most of you know everything that's, that has happened. And, yes, thank you, thank you. I really want to say thank you to the folks at the high school that dealt so delicately with the students. I think it was a very smart call to have a female administrator working with them. I think it was intelligent. As to the night, I would like to just say that 30 years ago, I was sitting in a philosophy education class with Dr. Gunter Salter, it was a master's level class. And he got to the end of the semester and he looks at us and he goes, okay, I'm going to tell you everything that's going to be on the test. And we think, great, this is what we need, because, you know, our school was very high on making sure that we passed this class and he goes, all right, so everything I taught you this year is going to be on the test. And I thought, come on. And he goes, but that's not all. Everything I thought I taught you this year is going to be on the test and everything I probably should have taught you is going to be on the test. I say that because that's the way the federal government is when they come walking in to do the inspection. They're not going to tell you what they're looking for. I know as a project manager, that's what I do for a living, I'm not telling you what I'm looking for. It's my job to find something. So, kudos to going through it and even though you think you're going to get that little check sheet going, don't worry, they're going to change the person and next time you're going to get hit They're going to change the person, and next time, you're going to get hit again by something else. This time, it'll be they're too small or too big this time when they get the big stop buttons. So it's all about the ocean and everything that goes with that. So don't feel bad. That's the way it's going to go. One of the things that I did mention to Mr. Orasi, and I'm sure it's probably already in your standards, is to the certificates for the CTE teachers. I used to be an educator, and so that made me a mandatory reporter, and therefore I did immediately report. But when you're looking at some of these, we're going to call them teachers, they don't always have the same classes that a regular teacher would have, some of the ethics classes, some of the philosophy education classes. And I am, as a father, looking at that going, okay, well, I understand that you might have a certificate in teaching mechanics or whatever it might be, but is that enough? What I'm asking for is that maybe we do some continuing education of basic things that you would have a regular teacher know for some of the CTE teachers. And I'm not saying anything in a negative way about these guys. Most of them have a true heart for the students. They're there to cheat a trade of some sort to our, to our students. And I just want to make sure that they have the same ethics, the same understanding that any other regular teacher, and when I'm, you know, your maths and sciences and arts, et cetera, would also have so that our children are protected and are not facing anything that could be called into question because of a lack of understanding from that standpoint. So I appreciate you guys this time tonight, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to approach the Board? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Wells.
Now we'll get to read.
Now we'll get to read.
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, 1, 2, and 119 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended the Board convene a closed meeting for the following, 1, Personnel Matters, 2, Student Matters, and 119, Discussion of Plans to Protect Public Safety.
Okay. Board.
Make the motion, we go into closed session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.